He was sure like. Oh, he is so he goes in the crazy. And for whatever reason, he actually likes that. But he likes that great. So there's things, I mean, I left him there once for. Like two and a half hours. I went to check.
So at this time, with all that you know, I am Dr. Sharon Johnson Shirley. And on behalf of our entire school staff and our school board, welcome to the twenty twenty five Lake Ridge New Tech School Cooperation Town Hall meeting. We're happy that you have chosen to join us either online or in person. We hope to have an open and rigorous dialogue with you. One that will answer your question. And we want to listen and follow through with some of your suggestions and work together for a common goal. To improve the education and experience of all of our Lake Ridge New Tech students, we need all people to get involved. My administrative team is here this evening to help answer your questions. The only thing that is off the table due to privacy and legalities on personnel and personal student related issues. So now without further ado, let's begin the conversation and let me bring Mr. Johnson, who is going to read the questions and I will direct the questions to the right person. Thank you.
No, but Mr. Johnson. Does anyone in the audience have any questions?
So if you don't have any online, then yeah, start with yours.
Okay, well, I can, I know I can put the principal on the spot. Are there any things coming up between now and basically the end of the school year that you would like to share with parents, anything right around the corner?
We start I R E testing next week, so I want to make sure that parents, make sure that their students are prepared. Every three, four third graders this year, if they don't pass, there's a good chance they will be held back if they're not. If they don't have an I E P or don't have any L.
We're getting.
So I just wanted to make sure that anybody, any parents that might be listening, make sure that your students are getting good sleep and that they're ready. Our second, third and fourth grade students will be taking the I R E.
So you are saying that if your child is in third grade, if they do not pass the I R E test, by state law, they will be held back regardless of parent mindset or my child should move on to fourth grade or my child is smarter than that. By state law, you're saying that that child will be left in third grade for another year.
For the second time, just that one back in town, I really want to hear from the community. Boy, yes, I'll be back in the credits and talk to you later. So do we have any questions online yet?
Not yet.
Okay, anybody from the audience? We have two who I have not seen before. If you come to the line and say your name and ask a question, you're read. That's what is open to you. During nine.
Come on, come on, Dylan. Come on, come on down. I'm gonna push on this side, Dylan. That's okay.
I'm Dylan. I'm the chairperson of.
You're doing good, Dylan.
My name's Dylan. I'm the chairperson with Ms. Nash at Jiminy's Head Startup at the Hossford Building. I don't have any questions, but I can say this is a great program and I really love this district. Yeah, I'm just new to this. I've been a stay-at-home dad for forty years, so I'm just walking into all of this, trying to figure out how to do all of this. But I want to be supportive and involved in any way that I can. Something I just kind of observed today and go forward with it. Thank you, Dylan. I feel there could be improvements with safety. Yes, I'm, I'm, so I'm a parent and I have a child who's a runner. And I talked to a lot of parents who have children who are runners. And at the start in the morning, the doors are always open, not the outside doors, the classroom doors. So I know the teachers do an amazing job, like what they do, but it can be really hard. A kid could easily slide out of that door. They're not going to get outside of the school because everyone's looking, looking out for each other. But I just feel, I was at the St. Mark's building and they have half doors in all the classrooms. I think if we could get that, then that would be a great thing because you have the half door, they just go in and you can sign them in, you never have to go in, it's just an open and closed real quick. I think so, not at, not at this time, not at that. My, that's my personal opinion.
Thank you, Dylan. I'll see you in Nashville.
So regards to safety, yes, I love the idea of half doors, but as many of you may know, we've been in Hossford for about eight months. So we have lots of, lots of growing to do. We do have some security concerns about our parking lot. I'm surprised Mr. Dylan didn't speak to that. Mr. Dylan is volunteer parking attendant. He volunteers in the morning to try to keep traffic. Mr. Corret, his team, they come out. So we do have some concerns about the parking lot and people parking illegally and speeding. So those are some concerns that we do want to address going forward.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? Okay, then move on and we started. This is the last bit. You have anything you want to tell the audience?
Ms. Redd just noticed that. Okay, just. Uh, actually, did you want me to comment in specific?
Unless there is a question, then you can, this is a time to carry information towards our lives and maybe words.
Where shall I start? Do I get an introduction? So I'll just stick with theme of assessments on March fourth. The high school will be administering our S A T test, which every junior in the state of Indiana takes. Just want to make sure that all the kids get enough rest the night four, so they're prepared. Also, want to show up on time. That goes for every day. Just to remind all the parents, grandparents, the family members, that school starts at seven thirty. So that means that you should be dropped off, if you're a car rider, by seven fifteen. So you don't get dropped off at seven thirty, you're dropped off at seven fifteen because school starts at seven thirty attendance is a major concern. And also please ensure that you are contacting the school to inform us if your child is going to be absent for today. So we have a record. Same thing, it's assessments, assessments, assessments. We have the I L E R checkpoint assessment coming up, the third, third issue of that, third cycle of that assessment. We also have the W E A that will be coming up in towards middle of May and or April. And then we also have the actual I L E R exam, the one that we are using currently. For those of you that may not know, we are planning the checkpoint assessment, I L E R checkpoint assessments this year. I am not sure what the state's gonna do with it going forward, if we're gonna go just the checkpoint process or if we're gonna do the overall I L E R exam, as we are doing both of them this year. So, you know, they already said, both of my colleagues here have already said it, proper sleep, good breakfast in the morning. And just making sure that any stressors they have at the house, they're able to maybe discuss those before they come or before they actually engage in that test. Just trying to keep your mind clear and ready for the testing. Because unfortunately, those are very high-stake tests. They determine a lot of, of the future of our students here. If it was mentioned before, if they don't pass the I R E three, they could be or will be withheld and retained at that grade level. And then as they move forward, if they struggle with the reading, they do have to take that exam all the way up until, I do believe currently it's now the seventh grade, they're talking about the eighth grade as well. So there is a lot of testing our kids have to do. The best thing to do is not just that they have the test, but to, to make those efforts for every day for our students to have a good night's sleep. Maybe remove some of those electronics at nighttime to get the brain to calm down and rest. Good night's sleep, good breakfast, and obviously some conversation to help students digest their day. There's a lot of stress going on in a student's life nowadays, and the best conversations can help that. Thank you.
Now, when you have those questions for the audience, from the audience, this is your flag.
Anyone from the audience? Students being withheld. Hi, how are you today? Pretty good. We've met before, actually, on a panel with the, with the Sero, yeah, yeah, that's right. Pretty good, I'm too. So my name is Preston Ruby. I'm actually the P R director with the Gary, Indiana Republican Party. You had mentioned students being withheld. Now, if I remember right, that was something that had been stopped for a while and we wanted to hold these students. And if I'm not mistaken, so how long has this been going on? Good, good. Okay, that was my only question. I like it, so. Thank you. Thanks. Good seeing you again. So you think that's gonna be, hopefully all of our students will pay us on that. Anyone else have any questions?
My name is Kelly Thomas. Nice to meet you. I guess we're here about metal detectors today and that's what I, I'm surprised my parents aren't here. Because I really think that we should implement them immediately. I don't know why this is even a discussion, because we don't have discussions with the community, which I appreciate this one. But we don't have discussions with the community, like when we name a, we name a building, but we have this discussion and more people should show up. And are we going to be going for a referendum? Because I know the state is killing us.
Well, let me just start. Thank you, Kelly, for that comment. Metal detectors, that's a conversation we need to have. We met with people last week looking at the cost. Metal detectors, the first company we talked to gave us a price of eighty thousand dollars and we would not own them. And that's for one year, and that comes with training and something else. And you said immediately, well, immediately comes with fines. You have to have fines to be able to do that. We did not pass a referendum when we tried. There is a need for a referendum. Safety is high priority on our list. And we are open for that discussion.
I just wanted to make a clarification, I guess. I was part of that meeting. And they did inform us, while the system really seemed, you know, pretty sophisticated. And, you know, they showed other schools that use them. They did say that per unit, which would be one entrance, if you wanted to implement them, you know, and any of our schools would be eighty thousand dollars per year. Yes, and that's another thing I guess I. So they also mentioned that those, they're not referred as metal detectors. While they do detect metal, they detect really everything that would, you know, appear suspicious. So it's kind of like, they showed an example, it's like infrared, where it will show exactly what you have in your bag or, you know, on your body. And then you would be pulled to the side, and yes, you would have to have at least two staff members at those entrances to be monitoring that through like an iPad, you know, while most of the students are coming. So what they said was is during student arrival, you know, it's fifteen, twenty, twenty-five minutes, thirty minutes, that you have to have in staff. And then after that, what they said is that most schools have an S R O that's near the front door, and then that would be the only entrance because for bigger schools, and what they refer to as bigger schools as, you know, upwards of a thousand, that they may have two to three entrances where students are entering the building, that they have staff members at those entrances to ensure that, you know, those monitors are being closely watched.
Thank you. And Adrian, I'd like for you to take the, off the referendum.
Sure. So, so I think, you know, we've, we've had a lot of conversations over, you know, the last couple of years and all of our budget presentations and finance presentations about how, you know, we've done a fairly good job in, you know, cutting costs, keeping, you know, using the dollars that we've been given in the best way we can. So through federal grants, through debt service borrowing, we've been able to, you know, maintain some of the services we've had. Make some, you know, construction improvements, you know, mainly through, you know, COVID relief. You know, the bond risk recently for our fieldhouse and auditorium. The problem is, is that it's, you know, the money is kind of slowly shrinking every year. I mean, because, you know, inflation, you know, given, you know, four percent a year, the state's only giving about two percent increases and, you know, budgets, they're just talking about property tax reform, pretty much.
Can you stay there, Adrian, with bill five eighteen that just moved?
So there, so there's two bills right now in, in General Assembly that we need, we kind of need to take a look at. It's Senate Bill One and Senate Bill Five Eighteen. So Senate Bill One is the property tax reform bill, and then Senate Bill Five Eighteen is the bill, more specifically, that shares operations fund dollars with charter schools. So, I mean, both of those obviously have impacts on Lake Ridge. Senate Bill One, you know, for instance, you know, there was a lot more loss before they amended the bill. So it's caps the levy growth to zero percent in twenty twenty six and then smaller percentages in the next two years after that. So obviously, that's great for the properties, for property tax homeowners, but, you know, cities and towns, school districts, it really, you know, it's, it's, it's a constant concern. It is. And, you know, so, you know, one of the, you know, one of the mechanisms that the state gives us to raise additional property tax revenue is through referendum. So I know that there are some changes being proposed in the State House regarding language referendum, timing referendum. So those are all things that we're gonna have to take a look at. Our next meeting, we're inviting folks from Policy Analytics. They are by far more expert than I am in, you know, the whys and wherefores, the dollars and cents about what we need to do. But that presentation, I think, will be instructive to essentially what Lake Ridge will probably need going forward and what's possibly. And that, and, and that's, and that's the word that I want to use here is possibly, you know, a referendum try would have to look like. Because there, there's, there's two things that we need to look at. I mean, obviously, it's our operational needs and then it's also our capital. I mean, because, you know, we've, we've done a great job, you know, kind of, you know, like I said, piecemeal, you know, little, little H back projects here, you know, a little renovation here. But there's still a lot to be done in a lot of these buildings, and that's something else that we need to take a look at. Yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering if we don't do the metal detectors. I know we have ones. I know it's metal, so for sure. They say they use them for baked pans or chips, whatever. What about getting the ones? Steve, I know every local bar in the area has one at this time.
We just started reviewing and trying to find the best place. But if you remember some years back, we tried to do that and the community came out in an uproar. They did not want metal detectors because it would make, well, I do. And it was that our schools would look like prisons. That was the conversation. So at that time, we went away. So now we're just at the beginning stages of having that conversation again. There, since that time, a lot of things have happened with crime. And so it's time to look at it again, and that's what we.
I was on the PAC committee that, you know, was for the referendum. And the only reason I would not be for a referendum, because I understand the need for one, is because the out of district kids. Maybe we could charge them an application fee and other schools do it.
But it's against the law. Do we do that? It's against the law. Adrian, you want to speak on that?
As far as I know, it's, so, you know, Indiana Public Schools, you know, the money, you know, you know, the education fund dollars follow the students. So that's, you know, usually how we get the funding for out of district students education is through, through that. Now, you know, there might be, you know, some changes down the road about, like I said, with operations fund dollars following the students specifically. I know there've been some efforts to kind of, you know, peg, you know, like I said, property tax revenue to shifting, you know, with students, but as of right now, that's not the case. So again, you know, we, we, you know, we've had the conversations about, you know, out of district students as far as, you know, how much they, you know, contribute as far as our, you know, base, our, our basic grant funding or, you know, obviously programs. That's, you know, I think we, the last time we did, you know, there was about, what, four hundred some students from out of districts? And that was, you know, to the two and a, you know, three and a half million dollars a year. So, I mean, that's, that's, well, and then I, I mean, I, obviously, that's a policy debate going forward and I'm not, you know, I'm, I'm just here tonight to kind of, you know, give, you know, put the financial perspective. All those other perspectives are obviously for a much larger community discussion. As far, as far as I know, you cannot charge an application fee, but that's something we, I would have to another check.
Yes, I'm Bradley Artson. I worked at the state prison in Michigan City for thirty-one years. And with you saying there's gonna be two people that have metal detectors, not gonna work. Because at the prison, they use six to eight staff members. Somebody comes through, dings on that machine, you got a guy's guts to the side to shave them down. Then you only got five people. If you got another person for five in, you got another person. So if you have two, you're gonna have to, you're gonna end up with a big line and it's not gonna work. Because at the prison, they use a lot of staff to do the shakedowns. And there's several hundred people that come through. There's gonna be the same way over here at school. Two people ain't gonna be enough. Unless you're gonna have everybody come through one door, you're gonna have one half a blind. Because we, over there in prison, they got several of those shakedowns here. And I'm very, I've done that thirty-one years on a shakedowns. They're safe. They've caught a lot of shanks, they caught a lot of stuff, and those inmates make weapons, shove them up, shove them in your leg. You have to stick them down in your laundry. I go to the nice city of work, to put them in your socks, to put them in your shoes. Do and leave all the different things that they could do with them. Then you gotta let you out of the plexiglass inside. You know, they go through that over there, just go bring in a plexiglass and pile it down on the thing, stick somebody, break it off. I mean, when you're looking at security, two people will not be enough at the shakedown machine. You're gonna have to have six or eight people there. Because you get five, five students that hits, then you gotta shave them down. Then who's gonna be there watching it? The line's gonna stop unless you just wanna let them in there. Once you see the whole function of the whole thing, you see what I'm talking about. But two people will not be enough on a shakedown machine. When you go through the one in your prison, those aren't stepped to the side, go over and as quick as you can, because we out go to restraining classes, I'm gonna shave people down, and we're not nice about it. Because I go all the way up and crack. Just being honest with you. I mean, if you're gonna do a good shakedown, you can't be nice about it. So I'm just, thirty-one years of experience in a federal maximum security prison, we're loving a hundred of them, never getting out, get out of the same. I'm just being honest with you. I'm just being honest with you.
That's, that's, that was a very insightful, uh.
No, Mr. Hudson's saying, you know, some, one of those main concerns when we had the initial conversation with some of these companies is, it's not just the, it's not just the infrastructure itself, it's the personnel that goes along with it. I mean, I think the first one, you know, they, you know, Mr. Malakovich was talking about, you know, it's how it, uh, you know, it's how did all this, you know, AI assisted and, you know, oh, you know, stadiums use these, uh, air, you know, um, large festivals use these. It's like, well, that's great, but also they were talking about, you know, having, you know, these little, you know, pull off, you know, stations with staff manning, you know, camps. And in the morning, you know, if we're talking at accounting at high school, I think, you know, and Mr. Malakovich can correct me if I'm wrong, right now we only have two doors. So if you have six hundred some students, you know, in the morning, you got three hundred at each, you know, station. So, you know, if you're talking, you know, trying to get them through in a fifteen minute window, you know, that's, that, 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 that's a lot of, that's a lot of labor and that's all it's at.
Um, so two things, uh, the metal detectors, maybe it might be feasible to use maintenance personnel or something to help. But really what I wanted to go back on, you were talking about certain bills when it comes to the financing of the schools. One bill you might want to look at that's being proposed is Senate Bill Sixty-eight. Because if that does go through, it's cutting property taxes and the homestead exemption in half. So the average home right now is paying fifty-five hundred to six thousand dollars a year in property tax in this area. It's going to be closer to twenty-five hundred dollars on average. So if that hits your school budget, you're going to be looking about tightening up a lot more. Might be something to look at and possibly prepare for.
Thank you.
I'll speak real briefly. In twenty twenty-four, um, the, there was, uh, Rhea Johnson, title director at Lake Ridge Schools. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, there was a law passed, um, eliminating the opportunity to charge application fees for public school transfers. And Mr. Johnson is the Title One Director. Mr. Brugiani?
Hi, I'm Dan Brugiani. I am a teacher at Cunningham High School and I'm also the president of our local AFT six-six-two. And I kind of wanted to piggyback a little bit on the budget part of it. What, uh, AFT National, our union, American Federation of Teachers, they talked about, uh, we're doing a day of action on March fourth for public education. And what, uh, they talked about is making it, it's not a political issue, it's a funding issue. Because there's a lot of rhetoric on both sides about what will this budget cut entail. Right now, the House budget, which just passed nationally, uh, I think three hundred thirty billion dollars are going to be cut out of public education. And there's also talk of closing the Department of Education. And statewide, we look at Mike Brown's, um, tax proposal, and I know some of it's been walked back, but the initial proposal was that Lake Ridge Schools would be losing about three million dollars of state funding within the next three years or once, once the budget passed. And so what we're looking at is kind of laying out to people, no matter where you are on the political spectrum, this is what these cuts will mean. And a lot of, and, and we're going to have a, a message kind of for the community, but a lot of it is special needs and Title One. And you, you can't cut billions of dollars out of public education, expect there not to be real, real bad implications. So, and I think one of the things you have to do, what? Yeah, well, yeah. Yeah, but, um, I, yeah, I think the thing to buses, food, um, special needs, uh, support, Title One, things like that. So what we want to kind of focus on is most of what we are for, there's Democrats and Republicans in this room, and most of us in this room are in support of public education. And we don't want to see massive cuts to it. My cousin is the most conservative person in the world. And he came to me and said, where, where did they come up with the idea that cutting billions of dollars out of our schools is a good idea? And I said, I don't know. But we have to get past the, the rhetoric of the left versus right a little bit and just say, hey, you guys, you know, Democrats, Republicans, you guys all have, or whatever political spectrum and you're on, you have people in these schools, this is going to negatively affect them and this is how. And so I, I like to see us all kind of work together, you know, even Adrian, you know, and, you know, we can put our differences in a great way, but, uh, so kind of look for that. Like the day of action won't be like a day of action, like a protest. It'll be more just getting the messages out.
So Dan, what, this day of action, will you, will teachers be going to Indianapolis or is this something that's going to happen locally?
Well, it's, uh, the same day as the SAT. So if I tried to get teachers Indianapolis, I might be executed. But the, um, it's not, it's not, some schools are doing like walk-ins. That's where they kind of hold pro-public education signs out front and then walk in. That way parents coming in, they say, what are you doing? We're, we're protesting for public education. Uh, so we're still kind of talking about it, but it's not going to be, we've, we've done picketing before and contract negotiations. It's not going to be that. It's going to be more, we're on the same team here. We're all here for public education and this is what these cuts are going to mean. But there, there's no march at this time, there's no actual physical like protest or sick, nothing like that. This is more, this is what this budget proposal means to you and parents and students and schools. So just kind of want to throw that out there, look on March fourth, it'll be nationwide and it'll be nonpartisan. Because, and then this last thing I want to say is those who know me know I'm pretty left on the political spectrum. Uh, there are people much further left than I am. But you have to understand in a state like Indiana, where there's a super majority of one party, it's Republicans in the State House who've saved many of the things that we're fighting for. There's a lot of really terrible bills that moderate Republicans have killed. And so just saying, oh, you're a Republican or whatever, we're not going to work with you, that's, that's a very losing proposition. I said, you have to, there are Republicans in the State House that vote with AFT Indiana eighty to a hundred percent of the time of public education. So we've actually endorsed many. So it's going to kind of look at getting past the partisanship, is that a word? Partisanship? And moving into, hey, we're fighting together and working together to do this. So we want to stop these cuts for our kids and parents in this community.
And something we did last week as a team, as these bills are moving through, all you have to do, pick up the phone and call your legislators, whatever side they are on. Leave a message for them, tell them who you are and why you oppose or why you support a certain bill. And they will take those messages. You think your voice is going to be heard, but sometimes collectively, uh, we had a team of people last week calling on bill, uh, House, what's the House bill? Five sixteen?
Five Eighteen.
Five Eighteen. And, uh, you know, it did pass through. But that's what you have to do. It is simple. Just go on indiana.gov, put in your zip code. And you, when you call, they will assist you. They have people listening to your calls. And it's just that simple. Call, and tell them what you, uh, support or do not support. So that's just something simple we can do, but we need to start looking for solutions. It's, uh, people don't understand the impact that it's having on us. First of all, you know, we have been living very skimpy with funds. We did not pass a referendum. And, you know, again, we talk about the aging buildings, they're falling apart. So we have to borrow and have to do things to get money to take care of these buildings. It's not easy. People were, why are they, uh, putting in a new auditorium? Well, for those that didn't know, it was deemed defunct. The fire department, we couldn't run anything in there, so we had to shut down the doors. So now it's, uh, being gutted and coming back up to scrap. If you look at our auditorium, there's walls that are leaning in. You, you, I hope you're safe, but behind, uh, some of the walls in the gym, they're caving, they're coming in. It takes money. We don't have it. And then we try to attract the best teachers. The competition down the street is so much greater because they have the funds. So we get all of our teachers trained and before we look up, we train them for another school district. It's a hard pill to run a school district on fume and that's exactly what's happening. So no matter what your politics, the children of Lake Ridge deserve the best, just like any other students in any other school district, but they cannot get them. And, uh, to Kelly's point, yes, we do take transfer students. If we didn't, we wouldn't have a school district. And contrary to belief, they're not always the problem in the district. So there's a lot of misnomers about transfer students. We keep our doors open because of that. So any other comments? Still have fifteen minutes and this is a time that I want you to feel comfortable about conversations.
Uh, let me ask you, um, don't worry, I don't even need it. I'm, I'm, I'm used to speaking. Um, so the, uh, your whole school budget, how short are you guys? What, what is the yearly deficit right now, study curiosity?
Actually, right now, we, because the state requires us to operate a balanced budget, we, you know, we are, we're flat. So it's just, it's a matter of, one of the things that's, you know, we have to, you know, kind of keeps us on the state's radar is, you know, we have two main buckets of money, our education fund and our operations fund. And state law says that, you know, each year you're not supposed to transfer more than fifteen percent from education to operations in order to, you know, keep operationally the things that we need as far as, you know, maintenance, uh, transportation utilities, property assurance. You know, that's where we're transferring, we're transferring about twenty-two percent per year. And so that's, you know, funds, you know, from the education fund that you're used for, you know, instruction, teacher salaries, uh, programs. That's money that we have, you know, because of, you know, property tax caps and things like that. That's money that we have to transfer from one fund to another. And, you know, and then obviously we have, you know, a rainy day fund that we've been spending down over the, over the course of the last forty years. So each year it just, um, I think, and like I said, next time we'll have a presentation by Policy Analytics that our, our, our cash surplus is, uh, probably set to run out probably sometime in twenty twenty-six.
Right, the rest of the money, guys, let me ask this. I don't know if you would be able to come up with something, but if you guys were able to do everything you wanted to, what would the difference be between what your budget is and what it should be?
Well, and that's, that is, that is an excellent question. I mean, because, you know, you're, you're looking at, you know, just off, off the top of my head, you know, right now, you know, the state, you know, wants us to be using sixty-two percent of our, our, our basic funding for teacher salary and benefits. We're short on that. We're, we're, you know, we're short on that. So obviously, you know, it would take us, you know, a few million dollars just to get up to, to par on salary and benefits. Um, you know, again, you know, as far as, um, the excessive transfer, you're probably looking at probably a couple million dollar difference a year. Um, so that's, you know, probably about three million right, right off, off the bat. And then that, like I said, that doesn't even include. Uh, so the transfer would, could be, you know, so that's, the money you transfer is, like I said, it's money that, you know, we could be using for teacher and staff or programs that, you know, we, we otherwise can't. Um, and then, like I said, that's not even to, to talk about, like I said, uh, you know, some, uh, facility needs that we have as far as, you know, just off the top of my head, you know, um, you know, parking lots need to be repaved. Um, the windows that, that long fella need to be replaced. Um, the locker, the locker and bathroom facilities accounting that need to be refurbished. It's just, it's, it's one of those things that it tends to pile up. And so I, you know, I, I couldn't give you like a, you know. I, then, so if, if, if we go referendum, we will certainly have that provided.
Okay, and, uh, we do have a question from online. And, and this is from Tate Amanda. Do they read comments online? Yes, we do. And, um, you might answer her question. Uh, also the website says the meetings are at six P M. I just looked at, begin, well, that's a regular. This is the town hall, it started at five. Uh, but if you have a question, you can type it in the chat and we will do our best to answer.
And I would, I would encourage the folks that are here tonight and the folks that are watching online, you know, school board meetings are the second and fourth Monday of each month. Um, you know, they are, they're public meetings and, you know, um, obviously, you know, they, there are, there is a chance for public comment. But there's also, you know, you, you learn so much by attending these meetings. So over the last, you know, two months, you know, we've had presentations not only for myself, but, um, you know, the, the building principals, the program directors, you know, this is where, you know, and obviously, you know, we, we'd like to, you know, we'd like to promote transparency and, you know, this is your community, your school, that, you know, we are more than happy to, you know, let you know that this is what we need and this is what we're fighting for.
So if you have any questions, you can type them in the chat and we will gladly answer them.
Anybody else? Well, this is what this meeting is for and this will not be the last of them. We always are trying to improve communication with the community. Uh, we see a lot of stuff on Facebook, so we want to give you an opportunity to talk about it face to face. And, uh, we've only had one question online, so that's fine. Anybody else? Is there any comments from my administrative leadership team? You have anything you want to let the audience know? We have people watching.
Do you ever thought of, um, out of the box ways of raising money within the school system, for the school system?
We have, we, we thought of some things.
So, so for instance, uh, we, we were very fortunate and the, the big old guitar back there, you know, kind of shows that, you know, we, we partnered with, you know, local, you know, businesses such as Hard Rock Casino to, um, get us some, you know, some much needed building renovation funding. And hopefully, you know, and we, you know, obviously Hard Rock is, you know, one of the bigger games in town. But, you know, we've, we've had, you know, quite a few, you know, uh, discussions with, you know, a couple of local businesses about, you know, and, and they, they pitch in where, where they, where they can and it's. See, that's, that's an interesting one.
Well, we have not.
U S Steel, the airport, I mean, those, those are conversations that, you know, we, we certainly need to.
You have any connection? Okay, we appreciate that.
I'm not saying I could do the same thing, but it's worth looking at.
Your willingness, we appreciate that.
Maybe getting a lot of tax breaks lately.
Anybody else? Technology, you have something you want to say or if you come, come forward, technology is.
Oh, sorry. I'm not, I'm sorry. I don't need the microphone. I just. Um, I just, I didn't know about this until today by word of mouth. And then like the Facebook, where it sends links to join them isn't working. And so maybe we can have another one and publicize it better. I'm not on Facebook, a lot of people aren't. Um, but there was no other way. And then just now, the people that were.
Hey, now, what do you want to talk about and support you need? And, uh, let me just say, and I move faster, we got ten minutes. As we are getting ready for testing, our technology is quite important. You have to see some of the destruction when we send them home and how they come back. Now, we spend every good dollar for things like technology. You want to talk about that a little bit? I'm leaving it open for you.
Yeah, uh, we scrolled on, I'm kind of the leader of the technology department, the technology manager. And, you know, one of the things that we see is just. and, you know, one of the things that we see is just a lot of damage to Chromebooks, we're constantly trying to fix them and repair them. Um, the damages are just, are just, uh, broken keyboards, they break their monitors, um, it just seems like we need more support from the parents at home to talk to their kids about taking care of their technology, because every kid needs a device, especially during testing, we gotta make sure we have enough. And so it's a, it's a, what do we average? About twenty?
Yeah, yeah, easy.
Like, easy twenty, twenty a month, maybe, or?
Yeah, we don't mean just damages.
I mean, yeah.
Just thrum down, tear them up. My uncle took it with him, my cousin took it, I don't have it, and then it's time for testing, and we're short of technology. And we keep trying to replenish, uh, but we can't, we can't, we can't afford that. And so at one point, we didn't want them to take it home, but just like last week or the week before, we had a cold day, we have to send them home, so education can continue, but we need the support from the community, from the family, uh, you know, take pride in that your child has a computer that's provided by the school district. Make sure that they get it back, so it's an important thing.
Yeah, like, when we're doing testing, you know, we gave everybody a charger, they have a charger at home, so we did two one for chargers. Um, we used to take them home at the middle school, but now they keep them at the middle school in carts, so we have chargers there, but we also give them chargers to have at their house. Um, technically, they're not supposed to be taken at the middle school, their, their, their Chromebooks home. Um, we're starting, not everybody, but we're, we're seeing some being taken home, so if the parents see their Chromebooks at home and they don't have permission from the principal, or whatever, for any reason, technically, they shouldn't be at home, they shouldn't be in the school, and that's why we're seeing damages probably from that. Um, and at the high school, um, we just asked, the high school does a pretty good job, we just asked that during testing, if they remember their Chromebooks, uh, because we can, it'd be a day of testing, and then the kid will come to, come to school, and they just say, well, I left my Chromebook home, and they know they gotta be tested. Everybody has headphones, so I, I checked with every school, and then you may have headphones to protest, yes, maybe.
Okay, we have a question from online, this is from Tay Amanda. Are there ways that parents can contribute to helping to get funding? Can these notifications be sent to parents about all meetings attached with a link? I guess that's a technology question as well.
So, I mean, so going forward, you know, this, this, you know, this is just the first kind of initial discussion in the much, much more detailed, much, much more in-depth conversation, so I would encourage, you know, the community, I would encourage parents that, you know, we, we will, we will publicize as much as you want us to publicize, it's just, we need, you know, we need participation, we need, and that, and that's, then that's the thing, is that, you know, this is, you know, this is just, we, we need to know. You know, we, we need to know what the community wants, what the community needs, and, you know, we, we serve at the pleasure of the community. And so, you know, we will, you know, we will get those meetings scheduled, we will get those meetings publicized, that's just, all we ask for is, you know, uh, civil discourse and, you know, polite conversation about what these kids need, and what, you know, what, what we want this community to look like going forward.
And we're all in the text with like, to anything that's online. I said, gentlemen, you came in, sir, you haven't had an opportunity, do you, would you like to ask a question?
Okay.
Okay, okay, thank you for coming. Yes, Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, I'm Rega Johnson, uh, title director for Lake Ridge Schools, uh, and I'd like to speak to, I'd, I'd like to, um, return to one of the comments you made about reaching out to congresspeople, senators, or representatives. I need to be sure that our entire constituency here in our district understands that's the state representatives and, and senators, and the federal representatives and senators. Uh, and I bring up the federal because, uh, most of the grants that we do get, not all, but vast majority, are federally funded, and there's considerable cuts, uh, and halts to federal funding taking place right now, that are made to impact us considerably. And just in a nutshell, what federal funding, uh, is primarily used for, uh, for us is remediating our children who are behind. So we talk about, um, passing the, the IREED or being held back. It's federal funding that comes alongside to help get those students who are a little bit, uh, behind the curve academically, uh, supported. About those federal funds, we're running on bare minimum for programming. The federal funds provide supplementary programs, uh, and, and software to, to aid students in learning. Uh, the federal funds fund, uh, the vast majority of our professional development. We could pretty much say all of our teacher training and staff training, um, comes, for education, comes through the federal funding. So it's very critical, not only that, where the bulk of the money is coming from, from the state, uh, when it comes to student tuition, that we're also very much knocking on the doors, ringing the phones, emailing our representatives at, at the federal government also to express that, uh, you know, Lake Ridge Schools, uh, needs to, uh, be funded adequately to, to maintain our programming. Uh, and so make the calls, make the emails, uh, whatever your, your flavor of politics is, um, we're not talking about a party, we're talking about a, a program to keep our students, uh, educated. And one of the things, if you look at the overall, um, impact of reductions in funding, it disproportionately impacts poorer, uh, poorer urban, uh, school districts. Uh, so we lose a larger percentage of what we, uh, need than the larger schools do, to start with.
First of all, I wanna thank all the people that came out and those that are online. We're getting ready to start our school board meeting, you're welcome to stay. Uh, we do stream our school board meetings every second and fourth Monday of the month, so if you have not tuned in, please do. And to our leadership team, I appreciate you for being here this evening. I know you could have been somewhere else in this beautiful weather today. And for our community, keep coming, you have questions, just still send them. Doesn't have to be today, if you think of something when you go home, call. And yes, sir, we would love to hear your suggestions and try to get more money in here, because that's what it's gonna take. It's the village, all of us doing the same things to do for our children. Our students deserve the best, keeping students first. Thank you for being here today, it is time for our school board meeting. This is your chance to stay, if not, this is your chance to move. Thank you so much, give yourselves a round of applause, thank you.